So Deputy Mayor, we do have quorum. I can just check to make sure we're ready and then you could go.
Yeah, it looks like we're ready to go. Perfect, thank you very much. I will now call the public hearing of March 3rd, 2022 to order. This meeting is being convened by electronic means. As such, council members may participate in person or by electronic means. For council members participating by electronic means, please ensure your video is turned on, especially since we have a few members on LOA. And let the clerk know when you leave the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. Council members are reminded that in accordance to Section 14.13 of the procedural bylaw, members must enable their video to confirm quorum as well as vote. If council members attending by electronic means lose connection during any portion of the hearing, we will recess the meeting until connections are restored. If council members lose connections during the voting process, staff will get back online quickly. We will suspend the voting process. Contact information has been circulated to all members. Members of the public can view the proceedings via live stream and a YouTube link, which will be tweeted out at Van City Clerk. We acknowledge that we are here on the traditional and unseen territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Switsh people on the Haukamunam and Squahomish-speaking lands. We thank them for caring care for these lands and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. I also want to take this time to recognize immense contributions of our city staff, who work hard every day to make this city an incredible place to live, work, and play. Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Mayor Stewart has the leave of absence. Councillor Carr has the leave of absence. Councillor De Genova?
Present.
Councillor Fry?
Present.
Councillor Swanson?
Here.
Councillor Hardwick?
Present.
Councillor, uh, Councillor Weeb is Deputy Mayor and in the chair. Councillor Boyle?
Present.
Councillor Dominado? Not here. Councillor Bly? Not present. Councillor Kirby Young? Not present. The hearing has quorum. Deputy Mayor Weeb?
Thank you very much. And we have based quorum for all councillors. As part of the ongoing COVID-19 health and safety precautions, staff representing or responding to questions will be in attendance virtually. Hybrid options continue to be available for council and the public with restrictions. We do have a couple, uh, members of the public here with her today. Thank you very much for being with us. The public may participate by speaking over the phone, submitting written comments to council or speaking in person. Please be advised that due to COVID protocols, the current maximum capacity for the council chambers is still at 20 people. Virtual participation is highly encouraged. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations and if they are resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along with Twitter at Van City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing through the online web form at Vancouver.ca-publichearingcomments. This link will also be tweeted. Those speaking on behalf of other persons or groups will have eight minutes to speak and only if those represented are also identified on the line or in person and must not speak for themselves. Speakers who pre-register with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say next so the clerk may advance your slides. I also want to note the City of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. I remind council in addressing speakers and staff, we avoid using gender honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first and last name, role, or title. A reminder that council's role at a public hearing is a quasi-digital body, which means councils only consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant, or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of the speaker's list. After hearing from speakers, council may, one, approve the application in principle; two, refuse the application; or three, refer the application to staff for further considerations. Finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we will recess and reconvene the meeting on March 8th, 2022, my mother's birthday, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. We will now move on to item one, which is a CD1 rezoning, 277-291 West 42nd Avenue. Does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on item one? Seeing none, the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Macrum Properties Limited to rezone 277 to 291 West 42nd Avenue to permit the development of an 18-story building with 211 secured residential, rental residential units, of which 20% of the residential floor area will be secured below market rental units. A height of 57 meters and a floor space ratio of 6.73 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval subject to the conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. Two pieces of correspondence in opposition have been received on this application since referral to public hearing. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thank you very much. Any speakers to this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participation code 1061445. Pound. Before the close of the speaker's list, the phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Also be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. We have Tess Monroe, rezoning planner with the rezoning centre on the line to present the application. Tess, are you ready to present?
Yes, I'm ready to present.
Go ahead.
Good evening, council. My name is Tess Monroe and I'm the rezoning planner for this application being considered under the Canby Corridor Plan. The site shown to outline in red is comprised of three RS1 zone lots, currently developed with three detached houses that are occupied by the previous owners. It is located on the north side of West 42nd Avenue between Alberta and Columbia Streets. The site is located in an area undergoing significant change as part of the Oakridge Municipal Town Centre, with numerous developments under consideration or approved, with heights ranging from six to 27 stories. Directly to the west is a recently approved rezoning for an 18-story residential building, which was considered under the same rezoning policy as the site, as shown outlined here in blue. The site is well-served by transit with Oakridge 41st Skytrain Station and major bus service along 41st Avenue. Several bikeways are also in close proximity as shown by the dotted lines on the map. Columbia Park is directly across 42nd Avenue to the south. The site is located within the catchment of the Van Horn Elementary School and Eric Hamber Secondary School. So as mentioned, this proposal is being considered under the Canby Corridor Plan. The subject site falls under the subsection of the plan designated for high-density residential buildings off arterial roads. These areas are intended to deliver a range of affordable housing options and create a diversity of built forms. Increased height and density up to 18 stories can be considered if 100% of the residential floor area is secured rental housing with a minimum of 20% of the floor area provided as below-market rental, or a minimum of 30% of the residential area is provided as social housing. The applicant is proposing an all-rental building with 20% below-market rental in alignment with the plan and shown by a star here. Supportable density is based on urban design and public realm performance. Tower-on-podium building forms with a continuous street wall are anticipated under the plan. The plan also allows for consideration of a partial floor in addition to the 18-story height to be used for a common rooftop indoor amenity space if contiguous with common outdoor amenity. In accordance with the plan, this application proposes an 18-story residential building with a four-story podium and a common rooftop amenity. A density of 6.73 FSR and a height of 187 feet to the top of roof parapet with an additional 13 feet for the rooftop amenity space is proposed. The proposal includes 211 secured rental residential units, of which 20% of the residential floor area, or approximately 42 units, will be secured at below-market rates. The application was submitted in May 2021, which represents an approximately 10-month review process to public hearing. This project will create approximately 97 new onsite and offsite jobs. When compared to home ownership costs, market rents provide a more affordable alternative to home ownership. If approved, this application is anticipated to deliver approximately 211 secured rental housing units, including 169 market rental units and 42 below-market rental units to the city's housing target. The below-market units are aimed at households earning between $30,000 to $80,000 per year and are to be rented at rates that meet the affordability requirements of the city's Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Programme, or MRRP. While this project is not one of the 20 projects considered under the MRRP programme, housing policies in the Canby Plan require the below-market units to have a rental rate and operating requirement in accordance with that programme to secure a deeper level of affordability. A virtual open house was held over a three-week period. A total of 13 submissions were received. Comments and support cited the appropriateness of the height, density amassing, and appreciation for the additional rental housing option. Concerns related to the proposal being out of scale for the neighbourhood, impact on shadowing in views, and the plan being too prescriptive in terms of building design preventing design variation. In response to public feedback, staff note that the proposal complies with the plan in terms of height and density. A shadow diagram confirmed that the building is located to the north of Columbia Park and therefore no shadows will be cast on the park between the hours of 10:00 and 2:00 PM during the spring-fall equinox. In response to the prescriptiveness of the plan, staff evaluate design criteria based on the built form guidelines in the plan, which seek to balance feedback from community consultation while providing clear direction for new development in the corridor. This proposal will contribute approximately 3.7 million in development cost levies and $233,000 towards public art, and 42 rental, rental housing units at below-market rates as the, uh, community amenity contribution. Given the financial testing undertaken during the plan's creation to determine the acceptable percentage of below-market, market housing commensurate with the permitted height and density in the area, no additional cash DAC contribution is required. In conclusion, this proposal is consistent with the Canby Corridor Plan and staff support the application, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant team here to speak to the application? Again, is the applicant team here to speak?
Uh, it's Bryce Rossich, the architect. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
And, uh, Tim Schmidt from, uh, Macrum Developments.
Okay, but would you like to, do you have any presentation or do you have any speech prepared at this time?
No presentation.
Okay, are there any questions from council to staff or the applicant team? Please note that this is the only opportunity to council to ask questions to the applicant. Councillor Swanson, you're first.
Yes, um, thanks for the presentation. Um, will the folks that live in the below-market units be able to use the amenities like everybody else? Just for the applicant, I guess.
Yes, they will, councillor.
Okay, thanks. Will it be a pet-friendly building?
Yes, it will, councillor.
Are you planning on getting any senior government financing?
Uh, that's not proposed.
Okay, um, I've got a couple of questions for the staff. Will the vacancy control, the type of vacancy control that's proposed for these units be the, the same as for the other MRRP units or will it be the watered-down kind?
Uh, I'll pass that question on to Alexandra, uh, who is with our housing team. Hello, thank you for the question. The, the starting rents will be escalated as per the amendment that was made last year. So the starting rents will be higher than the 2018 rents?
So vacancy control is...
But vacancy control upon turnover will remain constant.
Kind of privileged, could that have to be repeated? I couldn't hear staff's answer.
Certainly. Um, there will be, uh, the time of turnover, there will be no increase beyond the allowable annual increase as per the residential.
Okay, great. Then the, the only other question I had is, on page nine, it's got the table that has the rents that are allowed to access the DCL waiver. And I'm just wondering what the rationale is for having the, the rents for the DCL waiver be actually higher than market rents with the exception of the studio-sized units? Shouldn't the, the rents for, in order to get a DCL waiver be lower than, uh, market rents?
Though, those DCL, um, market rents are, A, not being pursued in this instance, um, and B, that is for the units that are not, if you're pursuing the DCL waiver, but not for the 20% at below-market rates. So that's if you're pursuing the DCL waiver protocol unit.
For the other 80%?
Yes. Well, no, it would be, there are, there are two possibilities for the DCL waiver. One is to choose to go 20% at the DCL bylaw rate, so the 950, et cetera. Um, and then there's also another, if you would like to do a maximum, this maximum that's listed in the table for all the units. The proposal for this project, um, I probably, we probably should have moved that, that column because at this time, the applicant is not intending to pursue the DCL waiver for either. They're pursuing the 20% below-market as per the verb with escalated rents. That's what they're proposing.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Swanson. Councillor Kirby Young?
Yeah, thanks. It's just a clarification and it might have been the tack on my end, but you repeated the part that I heard and not the part that I didn't, unfortunately. So the que, can you repeat the first part of the answer to Councillor Swanson's question with respect to starting rents, I think, was the first part of your answer? Was that what it was?
Absolutely. So the question was about what the, what vacancy control would be? The vacancy control will be the same that at turnover, there is no change beyond what is allowed as per the digital terms yet, but the, the MRRP rents will start higher as per the amendment made last year.
And they, but they start, in terms of, just to be clear, they start at the prevailing market rents, correct? Like, the, the discount is off of whatever the prevailing market rent is, not, is that at the time of, of occupation? Is that correct? That's what I'm trying to, um, clarify.
The, this project is going with the, with the MRRP rents, so the MRRP starting rent, which has been escalated?
Yes, but it's been, I, I guess, put another way, maybe I can ask a question different way. It's going to suppose what? So the MRRP is a, rents are, are based on what, or what are they in terms of starting rents? Just to, that's the clarification I'm looking for.
They used to be in line with the DCL, they used to be 950, 1200, 1600, 1200, 1200. And now they will be escalated from that, when he, that, those were the numbers that were set in 2017. And those will now be escalated up to using the annual allowable increase. So I was able to calculate it to the, the rents as of, if this, if this was built today in 2020, the rents that are noted on page nine, where a studio would be $1,039 would be if it was built today. And that will be able to increase, um, until the point of occupancy.
Okay, that's helpful. I wanted to clarify that because a lot of people, we've had these MRRP projects come forward and that 950 number and, you know, has been static. Um, and so I just wanted to be clear on where that was coming from. Um, okay, and then, um, I think that's it for now. I'll, I'll hold off on any other questions later. Thank you so much.
Thank you much. Councillor Kirby Young. Uh, seeing no more councillors on the queue, we will now move to hear from the public. We have our first speaker, Nathan Davidovich. Nathan, are you on the line?
Do you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, boy. Oh, you can hear me? Oh, okay, thank you very much. Uh, 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 Mr., I mean, our councillor, uh, uh, Weeb, Actimel, and members of council. Um, the, um, uh, I mean, while I support the rental, affordable rental in the, in the city and everywhere else, uh, uh, this site is not being developed by BC Housing. Why hasn't the city staff went to BC Housing and told them that, uh, all these properties are a result of the Canby Corridor Plan, uh, are, uh, designed for, uh, uh, affordable housing? And why didn't the, uh, the, you know, uh, and if they would have told them, then BC Housing would have bought these sites and then developed it. Uh, we do not really want more private-public partnership. Peak tree housing does not work. Who is going to be around in 60 years to check to see if they comply with all these agreements? You know, uh, 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 the city probably can lay off, uh, at least one lawyer and one planner who write all these complicated housing agreements that, uh, uh, somebody else will have to enforce in 50 or 60 years from now. And, uh, they wouldn't know how to do it, probably. Uh, the other problem is, uh, is the more, more housing being built east of Canby Street and we don't have the access to the Oakridge Transit, uh, uh, Skytrain Station uh, from the east side of Canby Street, where it could be done in just a matter of, of, of few months. You just convert the emergency exit into an entrance and then people from the east side of Canby Street can access, uh, the Skytrain Station and as well as the Oakridge Centre itself without crossing, uh, Canby Street. Uh, we need, uh, 24/7 bus service if we are increasing all the density on all these streets. Uh, and we need, so we need that on 41st Avenue, on Main Street, and on Canby Street in order to allow people the choice of using transit instead of using the, uh, vehicles. So, uh, so these are my comments on this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming to speak today. I see no questions from councillors. If there's any other speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participation code 1061445. Pound, before the close of the speaker's list. Phone number will be tweeted out and made available on live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium, seeing that our members of the public have left us. Um, do we have any speakers on the phone? Clerk? Not at this time. We'll call one more time for speakers and then we'll take a five-minute break. Is there any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council? Please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participation code 1061445. Pound, before the close of the speaker's list. We will now take a five-minute recess to wait for speakers to sign on. Thank you. Does council have any questions for staff? Seeing none, council makes its decision on this application. Do we have a mover for the recommendation?
Still moved, Councilor Kirby Young.
By Councilor Kirby Young, seconder?
Second, Dominado.
Seconder, Dominado. Is there any debate? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
Not seeing the vote coming up.
Yeah. Hardwick, we're just waiting for your votes. And, and Counselor Digenova.
I'm not seeing it on the X panel.
Are you able to, do you want to call for a vote assist?
Yeah. In that case, please, uh, mark it an abstention, uh, abstain, please.
Abstention for Councilor Hardwick. Councilor Digenova? And Counselor Digenova is absent. That passes with none in opposition. We'll now move on to item two, CD1 text amendment, 1002 Station Street and 250 to 230 Prior Street. We have received a yellow memo on this item, so the item will need to be moved with the yellow memo. Does any member wish to declare a code, conflict of interest on item two? Seeing none, the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Providence Healthcare Society to amend CD1 761 text amendment, 1002 Station Street and 250 to 310 Prior Street. The amendments would permit elevator overruns and stair enclosures extending 10.6 meters above the approved maximum height and protruding approximately 9.5 meters into council-approved Protected Public View 22 Main Street. The application also proposes to permit floor area exclusions for mechanical uses to a maximum of 22,891 square meters. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to the conditions set out in the summary and recommendations of the public hearing agenda. One piece of correspondence and support has been received on this application since referral to public hearing. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thank you. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participation code 1061445, pound, before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on live stream. We now have Lex Domenack, rezoning planner with the rezoning center, on the line to present the application. Lex, are you ready?
I'm ready, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council and members of the public. My name is Lex Domenack, rezoning planner for this application. Before I begin my presentation, I will remind council to move a motion to adopt the recommendation contained in the memo that was received by city clerks this evening. The proposal before you is for two amendments to CD1 number 761, which guides the development of the new St. Paul's Hospital site. The amendments would permit increases in building height to enable access to air ambulance services and allow floor space directly associated with the facility's energy center to be excluded from floor area calculation. The site is in the Falls Creek Flats local area and bound by Straight Station Street to the west, National Avenue to the south, Trillium Park to the east, and Prior Street to the north. The neighborhoods of Strathcona, Chinatown, and the downtown east side surround the site. The subject site is within CD1 number 761, which contains four subareas. The site of the proposed amendment is located within Subarea A. As the largest parcel, Subarea A is to contain the primary hospital building, research and administrative office buildings, a childcare center, and a civic plaza. Council approved the new St. Paul's Hospital and Health Campus policy statement in June of 2017. The policy statement envisioned a new hospital, research, and health campus for this site. Approved in 2019 and enacted in January of 2021, CD1 761 was created to implement the policy statement and permit the construction of a new hospital to replace the, replace the current St. Paul's facility on Burrard Street. On August 9th of 2021, the Development Board, Board approved first of several development permits required in the buildout of the hospital campus. This allowed for the construction of the 11-story primary hospital building over four levels of underground parking, a large civic plaza, adjacent private roads, and a circular public pedestrian amenity known as the Wellness Walk. The development permit differed from the indicative design shown at the original rezoning and featured a 90-degree rotation of the primary hospital building, Healthcare Boulevard, and Research Center. Building heights and densities were not affected by the reorientation. The final form of development for the primary hospital building and associated public realm was approved by council on January 25th. Received on July 13th, 2021, this application proposes two amendments to the CD1 bylaw. This includes the allowance of a 9.5-meter protrusion into Protected View 22, limited to stair enclosures and elevator shafts necessary to facilitate air ambulance services. The second amendment allows floor area directly associated with the building's energy center to be excluded from floor area calculation. This would equate to just under 23,000 square meters of floor area. The new St. Paul's site falls under two council-approved Protected Public Views and is most impacted by View Cone 22 along Main Street. This view cone defines the maximum building height for the majority of the hospital building. Through the detailed design development stage, following approval of the CD1 bylaw, the applicant has expressed a desire to future-proof the hospital by creating access to a rooftop helipad necessary in the delivery of regional critical air ambulance services, a use that was already approved in the CD1 bylaw. To do so, a direct link would be, would be needed to, uh, a direct link would need to be provided between the building's rooftop and the hospital's surgical floors, which would result in elevator overruns and stair enclosures extending into the council-approved Protected View. Protrusions into the Protected View have been constrained as much as possible, and the building height has been shaped to limit this incursion, resulting in a minimal impact on the public view. In addition, no further construction would be permitted to extend into any Protected Public View throughout the development of the healthcare campus. As noted, this application is also related to the building's Energy Center, which allows the hospital to be fully operational off-grid and thus maintain operations in post-disaster situations. The proposal would exclude from floor area calculations floor space directly associated with the Energy Center. During the earlier rezoning application stage, the Energy Center was proposed to be located on the hospital rooftop. As the standard practice, the approved CD1 bylaw excluded this floor area as rooftop or below-grade mechanical floors are typically not included in floor area calculations. However, during design development, the mechanical consultant determined that it was preferable to locate the Energy Center within the central area of the building. This change allows for improved building efficiency and increase in usable floor area and reduces potential conflicts between rooftop air intakes and emergency air ambulance services. The proposed amendment would permit the exclusion of Energy Center floor area, thus ensuring sufficient floor area is available in Subarea A to develop as intended in the earlier rezoning approval. A virtual open house for this amendment was held from November 1st to 21st of last year, and staff received 10 public submissions. Of this small amount of feedback, concerns were primarily related to the protrusion into public views and impacts the sightline. In reviewing this application, staff have concluded that the proposed additional height for elevator overruns and stair enclosures would not, would, would represent only a minor protrusion into the Protected View. And given the critical regional service that would be provided by air ambulance access, staff support this addition. In conclusion, given that the proposed amendments to the building height and permitted floor area exclusions will have no significant impact on the previously approved form of development, while also improving building efficiencies and emergency services, staff support this application. Thank you very much. Staff and the applicant team are here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council to staff? Again, do we have any questions from council to staff? Recognizing there's no application team. All right, we'll now hear from the public. We have one speaker, Nathan Davidovich. Nathan, are you here on the call?
Good week, Acting Mayor?
Yep, go ahead, Nathan. I can hear you.
Oh, okay, thank you. Uh, this new St. Paul Hospital has no transportation plan that's been made public by a proper consulting company. Uh, the urban design panel and the development permit board, they don't know how to ask the right questions about transportation. I tried to, to attend their virtual meetings, but I could not connect with them. Uh, on a per hospital bed, the new St. Paul Hospital will have more parking than the old St. Paul Hospital instead of having more public transit. Your own staff, by way of a memo dated January 21, 2022, advised you that we need way more transit to achieve the targets of the big moves of the Climate Emergency Action Plan. I think it states at least 30% more. Uh, city councils should discuss this memo and reactivate the Planning, Transportation, and Environment Committee now instead of waiting after the October election. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nathan. See no questions. Thank you for coming to speak tonight. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participation code 1061445, pound, before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Clerk, do we have any speakers on the line? None, we'll call one more time. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participation code 1061445, pound, before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on live stream. We will give a five-minute break to see if any speakers will sign up. Thanks, council. Thanks, council. Thank you, council. We are back in session. Seeing that there are no additional speakers, the speaker list is now closed. As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments, move on to hearing closing comments, asking for the questions of staff, and making a decision. Do staff have any closing comments?
No closing comments, but just a reminder that council will need to move the motion that was in the yellow memo provided earlier today.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for staff? Seeing none, council will now make its decision on this application. Do we have a mover for the recommendation with the yellow memo?
Counselor Boyle, I'm happy to move the recommendations with the yellow memo.
Thank you, Counselor Boyle. Do we have a seconder?
Counselor Kirby Young.
Counselor Kirby Young, seconds. Is there any debate? Seeing none, we'll move to a recorded vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We are now on item three, miscellaneous amendments, zoning and development bylaw and East Fraser Land official development plan. Does any council member wish to declare conflict of interest on item three? Recognizing we also have a memo on item three, the clerk will now read the application and summary of the correspondence received.
This is a report by General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability, which recommends miscellaneous housekeeping amendments to the zoning and development bylaw and East Fraser Lands official development plan. The proposed amendments would achieve the intent of the bylaws and correct inadvertent errors, update references, and improve administration. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. Two pieces of correspondence and opposition have been received on this application since referral to public hearing. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thank you. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participation code 1061445 pound before they close the speakers' list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on live stream. We have Alina Straka, planner with Citywide Regional Planning, on the line to speak to the application, and there is no PowerPoint presentation. Alina, are you ready?
Counselor Weid, it's Chris Robertson, Assistant Director of Citywide and Regional Planning. I'll be introducing this item tonight, and as you've noted, there is not a presentation. I just want to reiterate that this is a standard housekeeping report that is fixing typographical section numbering and related corrections to our zoning and development bylaw, as well as the East Fraser Lands ODP. There are no substantive policy changes introduced with this. This is simply fixing errors that have been identified as we work through the district schedules. The... We did receive correspondence today. I know you've noted that there was a yellow memo circulated. That yellow memo was in response to a request for our red line document, which we produced today. Apologies that it came to you late, and we hope that you've had a chance to look at it. With that, I will pass it back. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Are there any questions from council to staff? Counselor Hardwick, I'll answer you.
Yes, thank you. And first, just to staff, thank you for the red line and the yellow memo. It was just at 5:00 and very short turnaround time to do the additional analysis. That said, I acknowledge that much of this is miscellaneous amendments, but there are a couple of tweaky bits that I'm interested in talking about, because they actually are potentially affecting not just East Fraser Lands, but rather Brownview and Mount Pleasant in particular. So, the areas of concern are mostly in recommendation A. Have you looked at section 4.7.7 in the RM11 and RM11 and district schedule? In particular, there it appears that there's contemplation of more density for multiple units achieved through purchase of amenity or affordable housing shares. There... To me, there was an omission in that. I just want to ensure that staff acknowledge that omission in V or five.
So, Counselor Hardwick, it's Chris Robertson, Citywide and Regional Planning. I would just... I'll probably defer to Lisa in a moment here, but I do want to just reiterate that all of the policy-like insertions, and these should now be recognized through the red line document, are not new policies. Those are previous policies that have been approved and, for whatever reason, were omitted in the district schedules within the zoning and development bylaw. So, they are just being corrected. There is no new policy being introduced.
Okay. Well, again, the devil is in the detail on these things, as we know. And, you know, there were, again, a number of different clauses that refer to corrections that did deviate or seemingly deviate from policy. And, again, after careful, although quick review of the red line version, there were still a couple of outliers, which I have had the opportunity to discuss with the Director of Planning, who I understand had also discussed them with law. And I don't know if the Director of Planning is available to address this, but I think there was acknowledgement that the red line versions had actually shown some proposed changes that required some further refinement.
Thank you, Counselor.
Teresa, I'm here in the office with Chris and Lisa. We... I will kind of... I want to back... I want to clarify that Chris's group is just... What we're doing is we're just cleaning up. This is not new policy. We haven't introduced anything new. However, if there is a desire for members of the public or the council to take a closer look at the red line strikeout version, we can certainly pull those pieces of concern out tonight and pass the remainder of the document to give you additional time to review the text and satisfy your own concern. I don't know that we... It's a couple hundred pages. I don't know that we want to go through it tonight, but we can...
No, it's real... You know, again, the devil's in the details, as you well know.
I can assure you, though, that there are no new policy changes in this that have not been previously discussed with council. There are no new changes. These are just codifying policy changes and directions that council has given us on previous actions.
So, would you then not characterize these as... You're characterizing these as minor non-substantive changes?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Well, there's a couple which I've sent to you, as you know, that are of concern. So, if I have my questions, I'll park them there, but my hope is that we would be able to review those minor ones that we've discussed, but I'll bring that forward as amendment when the time comes.
And we have no objection to a delay in those parts, but I want to assure the rest of the council that there's nothing new. But if you'd like additional time, we do not object to the delay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now hear from the public. Our first speaker and a member of the public who does great service here in the city of Vancouver, Nathan Davidovich.
Thank you, Counselor Weid, and members of council. There is nothing mentioned about buying the CP Rail train corridor that has been abandoned last year. This could be similar to the Arbutus corridor, and the city official development plan should be amended if the city buys the rail line. And as consequences, we could have better bus or rail service in Vancouver and Burnaby, because the railway is not being used anymore. The community amenities will not be available probably for another four or more years, and this is another example where the former Vision Council made lots of mistakes in the River District, and the new residents are suffering because of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nathan. I see no questions, but thanks again for coming to speak. If there are any other speakers on this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participation code 1061445 pound before they close the speakers' list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Seeing no speak, we'll call for speakers for a third time. Is there any speakers on this item who wish to speak to council? Please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participation code 1061445 pound before they close the speakers' list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live screen. We will now take a five-minute recess to wait to see if any speakers are calling on this item. Thanks, council.
Need to be corrected. I'm just wondering if we can, if staff have seen that and if we can hear if these are changes that require going back to staff to make? Or, I guess, just get some feedback. I certainly know we hear from the community about wanting to see things move forward. So I'm interested to hear from staff on that.
Thank you, Councilor Boyle. I don't see that there is additional work for staff to be done. I do believe the amendments are in order. This hold is, it's my understanding that a hold would just allow members of the council and members of the community additional review time so that they can see the Red Line strikeout version. I apologize that we didn't provide one earlier. We did think in this particular way we laid this out that we had a couple of charts on the first two or three pages that we thought were very clear about what changes. But I certainly understand the desire to see in the text of the document where those changes are made. And so we wouldn't, I do not anticipate additional work by staff. It would just be a delay, so to give additional review time to the public.
Okay, so there aren't, it's a clarification of what's there, but there aren't omissions or errors that need to be corrected in staff's opinion?
That's right.
Okay, that's really helpful clarification. I don't have any other questions, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Dominado.
Thanks, Chair. Similar to Councilor Boyle, I had a question on the forthcoming amendments and just staff.
Are we able to actually wait until the amendment hits the floor?
Certainly, yeah.
Better practice. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Seeing no other councillors on the queue. Do we have a mover for the recommendation, including the yellow memo?
So moved, Councilor Dominado.
Moved by Councilor Dominado with the yellow memo. Do we have a seconder?
Councilor Boyle.
Councilor Boyle. We will now debate Councilor Dominado. Or Councilor Hardwick.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Councilor Hardwick.
Thank you. Oh, good, I'm not on mute. Thank you very much. Yes, as mentioned, I have put in some small amendments, which, as the Director of Planning has indicated, are not hills to die on, but I think would build a lot of goodwill in going through the further refinement and exploration, specifically in Recommendation A, small v. There is an omission in 4.7.7, if I've got the right one here, in the district schedule. And this is really where we need to be looking at where more density for multiple dwellings can be achieved through the purchase of amenity or affordable housing shares. IX, which is nine, to correct the minimum site area allowance for minimum, sorry, multiple dwellings to align with unit density. And I don't want to just read it because it's there on the screen. And my final point in all of this is I've been pushing for some time to get Red Line versions and to be able to get documents well enough in advance that give sufficient time to be able to go through the kind of granular analysis that some people need to be able to do. So I would, I'm grateful to the Director of Planning and staff for their willingness to review these small items, and I hope that I can have the indulgence of council.
Thank you, Councilor Dominado.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, no, I appreciate the amendment. I'm just trying to get some clarity, maybe further clarity to Councilor Boyle's questions, is around the motion or the amendment includes community consultation. And I guess I just want to understand to what extent that, what that's going to look like, in what form, and how long it would be. And is there, in referring some of this back, these recommendations, is there going to be significant implications for East Fraserlands? So if staff could maybe expand on their answers to Councilor Boyle, because I'm not entirely clear on what the consequences or unintended consequences might be of making this referral back on these particular sections.
Staff.
Yes, I'm going to ask you to take a shot at that. This is an omnibus, right? And there's lots of different pieces. And as I understand, Councilmember Hardwick's intent is just to pull out specific pieces that relate to the RT zones. Everything else would go forward, and those RT zones, those changes to the RT zones would pause. It would publish it on our website. And I think that's probably about the amount of consultation we do, just make it available for the public to inspect. I don't see any changes, because, again, these, what's being brought forward is the implementation of direction that council has previously given staff. And as to the specifics of how these RT zones changed and when, Chris, I'll have to ask for your help on that.
Yes, thank you, Teresa. Chris Robertson, Citywide and Regional Planning Assistant Director. I'll probably defer to Lisa on the timing of those changes. But, again, want to reiterate that all of the items that are in front of you today are actually already being implemented through policy and work. So, you know, happy to provide the public with more time to review the documents, the Red Line documents. But in actual fact, the work is happening today with district schedules needing to be caught up with these omissions and corrections to typography and numbering in sections and things like that.
Okay, I guess it's my fault too. That would be then, I'm, what I'm hearing, and I just want to reiterate it so I'm clear, is that I'm not hearing concerns from staff on this. This would be, this is reasonable.
Yes, so ideally, we would proceed with the document as done. Having said that, yeah, providing more time is not going to pose us a challenge with the implementation of these things that's happening now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to ask a question as a chair to the mover. Actually, Councilor Kirby, I'm glad.
Thanks, Chair. I'm going to ask a question through your staff, if I can, to the Director of Planning, and perhaps it's me, and I'm not quite clear. But I see different things going on in this amendment, and I want to be really clear on how staff interpret it, because I understand the objective of five and six, as they're written, in terms of corrections and the consequential amendments in, or consequential amendments as mentioned in the amendment. That part I'm clear on. What I'm not clear on, and I'm not comfortable voting on, unless I get clarity on this, is that it says, it doesn't say pass, because what I heard the Director of Planning say is that this will pass, but further work on these pieces. So we're referring back to staff. It says Recommendation A. But Recommendation A appears to be the entire bulk of the report. So I'm not sure which pieces would carry on, because it's, and perhaps it's the language, right? Because it doesn't just say the following components. It does identify the section, I want to be clear. But following up on Councilor Dominado's, it also says, "For further work and community consultation, I can understand the work to correct the omissions, but I'm not clear if these are housekeeping or corrections to be made, what community consultation would be done on them, as opposed to correction." And then my third question is with respects to the last paragraph, which I read, to use your language, is much more of an omnibus, which seems to speak to policy overall around public hearings in general and any changes being redlined. Or is it supposed to be referring to the specific application? Because that, to me, seems to be a much broader-reaching piece in how it's written, that it suggests that for changes to zoning bylaws and guidelines, that all of them will undertake that. And so I'm wondering if that is the appropriate or best way to achieve that, or that should be done separately outside of a public hearing? Or does that need to be a separate motion? Because that seems to be, to be broad-reaching and quite overarching. So I know I throw in a lot of questions at you, but I'll stop there.
Thank you, Councilor. And I'm just asking the clerk to make sure that I have the latest version of the motion. The version that I have, council refers back to staff, Recommendation A. But as I'm reading it, it's only Section B, five and nine, and then C. But in our discussions with the attorneys, we don't think, we think C can be stricken, because five and nine eliminate the need for that. And then, and further staff provide Red Line versions. We can certainly do that, the maps, the links. We can put that on our website. We can put it on our What to Shape Your City site. We can explain, you know, how these changes came about. I don't know that we would do any additional consultation beyond just explaining when council made those changes, what the policy was that implemented those changes, and then just clarify that this is simply just cleanup work. It's not introducing anything.
So you're seeing it as communication? I'm reflecting back, just for clarity. You're seeing it as communication, not consultation. Is that fair?
Yes, yeah.
And also, are you seeing, or am I hearing accurately that you are seeing that this last clause relates to this specific report versus providing Red Line versions for changes to all future reports, bylaw changes?
I am reading it that it is, that it pertains to this report, not all. I understand that's Councilor Hardwick's desire for us to always do that. But this, I think, only gives me guidance, or gives me direction for this particular report.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate that. And Chair, if I might ask a point of clarification through, to the mover, through you?
Yes, go ahead.
Can I do that? Councilor Hardwick, is that, based on this question I asked, is that your intent? Does your intent align with staff's interpretation of your amendment?
I'd be a little bit broader on the public consultation than the communication. But there, there needs to be a few conversations. I don't know that it needs to be a full, fully baked public consultation, but there, the opportunity to provide input onto this level of detail, I think, would be welcomed. And I don't think it's a huge stumbling block, but I think that the goodwill would go a long way of having some dialogue around this.
Okay, thanks. And so, Chair, going, referring back to comments, then I would have a hard time supporting the amendment, because I'm hearing that there's a different expectation than, of the mover, than the interpretation by staff, and I don't think that the language aligns with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Boyle.
Thanks. I also appreciate those answers and also get the sense that there is a fair amount of confusion about what this would mean. And it seems to me like the confusion outweighs the value of doing this. I'm certainly also conscious, as council is, I'm sure, of how full our public hearing agendas are. And so I'm not seeing a reason to refer this back. If there's more information that can be provided anyway, great. Certainly, that's always appreciated, but I won't be supporting the amendment. It's not clear to me where it would get us and why. And I think that miscellaneous amendments as presented are important, and the neighborhood has been keen to see things keep moving, and I will support that by not referring it back.
Thank you. I'm going to advance myself. I do have a couple concerns with staff's response to C, and that it should be stricken, as well as some of the confusion on and further that. So I'm going to take a five-minute recess here to quickly, I got a letter from staff here, quickly consult with staff on some of the clarity on this amendment before we proceed any further. So I will take a five-minute recess. Thank you, counsel. We are now back in session. I've spoken to staff. If Part Nine is pulled, then all of C needs to be removed from the report. Counselor Hardwick, you're up, recognizing we haven't had a secondary yet, but we will continue to have conversation. Counselor Hardwick.
Yeah, there are details, for example, relating to things like minimum lot sizes that are set on, on purpose. That the proposed changes cannot simply be presented as correcting, because the implications throughout the whole constellation of related clauses with, with, within the schedules are affected by this, which is why I keep saying the devil's in the details and more than we can go into just in, in a, in a public hearing like this, especially when we just, again, we just got the redline versions at five o'clock before we're going into this meeting at six. So there, there's, again, this is ultimately what's at issue here, and it's not about the, just about what's happening as it's stated in, in the southeast corner of the city, but rather it affects the whole of the city. So, and in my view, this does require more attention, more attention to detail and review than, than has, we've had time to do here. And I don't know why, when staff are prepared to do that, why counsel would find that objectionable.
Thank you. Counselor Kirby.
Yeah, no, I was just going to ask a point of procedure, if you can refresh for me, Counselor Weave. I don't believe that we can actually discuss an amendment unless it's been seconded, can we? I know, I know you said that, just to clarify, you said that we can continue discussion, but I didn't think that you could debate and discuss, and maybe it's not on the floor, and it's not on the floor if it's not seconded. Isn't that correct?
We should be, I will be asking for a secondary now. Do we have a secondary to this motion? Amen. See none. The motion is not on the floor. We will go back to the original recommendations by staff. Do we have any speakers to the original recommendation? See none. Is there any debate? We will now vote on the original motion as recommended by staff. And that passes with Counselor Hardwick in opposition. We will now move on to Item Four, the Heritage Designation, 510 West Hastings Street, the Standard Building. Does any member of council wish to declare conflict on Item Four? See none. The clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability to amend the classification of the Heritage Building located at 510 West Hastings Street, known as the Standard Building, in the Vancouver Heritage Register from the B evaluation category to the A evaluation category, and to designate its structure and exterior as protected heritage property. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability, in consultation with the Director of Legal Services, recommends approval subject to the conditions set out in the summary and recommendations of the public hearing agenda. No correspondence has been received on this application since referral to public hearing.
Thank you. If there are any speakers to this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participation code 1061445. Before the close of the speakers list, the phone number will be tweeted out and made available for live stream. We now have Eli Sabadlan, Heritage Planner, Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability, here to present a short presentation of three slides. Staff, are you ready for your presentation?
Yes, I'm ready.
Go ahead.
Chair, my screen. Good evening, Mayor and counsel. My name is Elijah Sabadlan, Heritage Planner, presenting to you the proposed heritage designation of the Standard Building addressed at 510 West Hastings Street. As mentioned, the owner is seeking voluntary heritage designation to meet eligibility criteria for the Heritage Incentive Program as, as outlined in the development permit application. If you may recall, on Tuesday, council has adopted by consent a report that recommended the Heritage Incentive Program grant of up to $2,925,875 for the heritage rehabilitation and seismic upgrading of the Standard Building addressed at 510 West Hastings Street. At this point, staff is seeking council approval to amend the classification of the Standard Building at 510 West Hastings Street from B to A evaluation category in the Vancouver Heritage Register, and also to designate the structure and exterior of the Standard Building as a protected heritage property. The heritage value of the Standard Building is outlined in the Statement of Significance provided by the Heritage Consultant, the applicant Donald Luxon and Associates. The Standard Building is a landmark Edwardian-era bozart architecture designed by architects Russell, Ebbcock and Rice, valued as one of the earliest high-rise office structures in downtown Vancouver, and as a representation of the Edwardian-era economic boom and the westward shift of the business district. At the time of its construction, the Standard Bank Building was deemed "one of the tallest commercial buildings in the British Empire," featuring steel frame and concrete construction. Based on the new research sources from the Heritage Consultant, staff is recommending its evaluation be changed from B to A category, as mentioned. The deliberate ornamentation and high degree of embellishments of the building's five upper level, levels, including the use of fans cladding on all elevations, could be attributed to the fact that its permit was taken out just before the passing of a bylaw restricting the height of the buildings in the neighborhood to ten stories. This heritage designation is voluntarily sought by the owner in order to ensure long-term protection of the Heritage Building and to meet the eligibility criteria of the Heritage Incentive Program grant as financial incentive for the proposed seismic upgrading of the exterior character-defining elements of the Standard Building. Thank you for your time, and staff are prepared to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from counsel to staff? See none. We'll now hear from the public. Apparently, we have no speakers on this item. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participation code 1061445, pound, before the close of the speakers list. Followed again, if there are any speakers to this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participation code 1061445, pound, before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and available on live stream. We will now take a five-minute recess to wait to see if there's any speakers on this item. Thank you.